At this time we'll call it Tuesday, July 12th, 2022, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie, other county supervisors, we have Lisa. Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the Otter's Office and Luanne is off today, so. But we do have a special guest, Greta is with us on her way to Prague in a week or so. And she's visiting her aunt Nancy Mayfield, so welcome, Greta. First item on our agenda this morning is Mike Clausen, and I see he has Roger with him, so. Is that for support or?
Morning.
Good morning.
Mike. The first thing I have is a driveway permit for Adam Zerden, Tidymore Township, Section 16. It's on the west side of 333rd Avenue. We asked the board to approve.
So move, second, we have a motion, a second to approve the Adam Zerden. Residential entrance permit, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Okay, the second thing I have is the safety policy that you reviewed with Todd last week, work session. We sent it to the insurance company and they made just a couple of small changes. Under the road superintendent and the engineer both, they added a statement disciplining employees will violate this policy as part of their. And, and then. It was under the hand protection, they added gloves will be provided for protection when performing job duties that have potential for cuts, abrasions, or pinch points. Those are the only changes, otherwise it approved the policy as, as it was written.
So we've never had any like safety shoot policies?
No.
No, and how do you guys feel about this policy?
I think everybody's.
I think they would be happy.
We formed a committee a while back of five people. And Todd's been kind of meeting with us, walking us through it, kind of pattern, I think, a lot of your planning.
And Nancy, that's Roger Mueller.
Okay, thank you.
And this includes a $230 stipend.
Yeah, right.
Pay for shoes and, and safety.
Safety equipment.
I have a motion to approve.
I would second. Motion is second to approve the safety policy and the stipend, safety stipend. Any further discussion?
I think it's good.
I agree, it's a great move. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And Nancy, just for record, I think Roger's title is Jackson County Road Superintendent?
Yes.
And that's all I have.
How are we doing with the south main?
We're waiting on the concrete guys for paving the road in on the north side, that's ready for paving, the cubs are set. On the south side, they're still doing some grading work and putting some rock in for base. They just said there was a storm drain that goes on the north side there, south side. They just said that yesterday, after the rain.
I gotta be honest, I haven't been down that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's looking good.
Yeah, striders are out of there right now, they're hoping to be back in. In a couple of weeks.
So how are they with their timeframe? Are they pretty much on, on schedule timewise?
They're actually a little bit ahead of, ahead of schedule. We're, we've got about 25 or 27% of the projects done, and they're a little bit ahead of schedule on their time.
Well, they're usually pretty prompt anyway.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, crack sealers are in to working right now, so we've got several roads we're going to do that on.
Patrick's?
Crack sealers.
Yeah, but what about the Patrick?
I haven't heard anything from him. Roger and the, and the crew have been doing some patching.
I've seen some of them, yeah, and that western, western side of Craig's, yes, Rob.
Yeah.
Had a call on a road north of Rockdale there. Going up to the Clark's.
Yeah, Roger talked to Nick last Friday and the guys went over there and did some work on it. They're keeping an eye on.
Yeah.
It was from that big rain that we had.
Yeah, there's the little one that cuts by the paragrams, you want a pan or that little shortcut to get around on.
The school, this is 223rd.
Yeah, well, it's a real short one right by the paragrams.
Yeah.
I noticed that was kind of washed out, so I didn't get a call on it, I just drove across and I could see rust.
Is that by where Ross River, River Juice, that kid at corner makes that trying?
Yeah, it's been seeing a lot of traffic since the class trees.
I figured you probably going over all the roads after a rain like that, so.
Yeah, they're out waiting right now.
Good. Sounds good. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike, thanks, Roger.
Yep.
James Kaplan, you want to come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
You know, I talked to Mr. Steinis the other day about fireworks issues, it's, it's been, I guess, an ongoing thing. Since they've made them, you know, basically legal for everywhere in, in the state of Iowa. Even when the iron horse went here a few years ago, they would echo up the hollow and I had cattle in the pasture right into the fence, I hear the fence screams, nobody got out. But it, it just seems to be a continuing problem every year, that, you know, my cattle gets scared, they run into the fence and this, I'm just afraid they're going to get out someday and get into cornfield, get on the road. And so on, so forth, and I don't know. You know, and the fireworks have gotten, the homeowner, they've gotten bigger, 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 I mean, it's just really shooting some massively large fireworks, which I used to see in cities when I was a child, you know, and that's just. You know, I wish there was a radius or somehow to make the public aware of people's livestock surroundings or a distance, maybe that they can't shoot something like that off that would, you know. Or, you know, just somewhat educate the public, I guess, more than anything, because, you know, I'm, I'm a plumber, I gotta get licensed for that, I have continuing education, my pump installers are DNR, I have continuing education on that. And also into the beef end of it. You've got the BQA, which is the Beef Quality Assurance, and one thing, they want your animals to stay calm. Like when you shoot them in needles, do you want to do it in the neck, you know, my animals are running into fences and this and that, they're damaging their muscles and stuff too at that point and stuff. You know, and stuff, and then far as supporting businesses related to that, I got 21, I ran a lot of deer checks in county that I just, you know, which it all goes in hand, agriculture and that, but. I guess my biggest thing right now is trying to make, you know, make the public more aware of their surroundings, you know, for livestock and stuff, I, I don't know if you've had other people with this complaint or not, I guess that's, I'm here today, so.
I guess no one has contacted me, okay.
I did it, I mean, in the past, not this year, but in the past we have, yes, and when we, I mean, and we, we talked of this and we've talked to the county attorney already too, and. So there's two different types of fireworks, of course, the, the home based and then the, the more dramatic, whatever, and I don't know if it goes by height, if it goes by classification, but. We issue permits for fireworks. And as you're aware of, and then we certainly look at the surroundings when we issue them to see how far we are from a confinement. Or ask the applicant to talk to their neighbors anyway. Well, the problem lies is we don't get.
Right.
We don't get all the permits in here, and we don't know they're shooting them, you know, so then it comes to me, it comes to be a either into zoning would be a nuisance or it would be. A law issue, you know, right, that's the way I look at it, but of course we don't, we don't. And I've checked, you know, a couple of your surroundings over there, and we have not issued a permit to them.
Right, and there's like, you know, in my area, within a half mile of my, there's seven, seven households, any one of them could decide to shoot anything off at any time, you know, and stuff, and two. And, and I feel bad, I have to go up to my neighbors and, and my neighbor gal last night, she was very upset with me and I had ruined her fireworks, I had ruined this and that, but I mean, I had, I had no choice, she told me I was totally in the wrong, but. I had no choice, I mean, I had to protect my, you know, my livelihood, what do I do, you know, but I mean. She told me I was totally wrong, but I don't. Well, when you call Lawson, I had called them the year before about two, and basically told me, there's nothing I can do, but I mean, someday, you, hopefully it's not mine, there might be a problem, you know, somebody else is. You're out on the road and there's an accident or something, I don't, I mean, I don't know. It's, 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 to get 22, I know it's a tough.
Well, you know, I just, I just know anyone coconut, I was just flabbergasted with the number of fireworks and. As you say, they're like the city used to have, and great big ones that go clear up and the big starbursts and all of this, and. I, I could stand in my yard in every direction of my house, but there were fireworks.
Yeah, we came home, I think we made, came home from Grand Mountain, we got home, it was quiet and dark and everything, get out of the Jeep, start walking towards the house, and one of them real loud ones, and it never saw, it's just boom, I'm just. I mean, it just.
Right, right.
Just echoed through the valleys and.
Well, the worst thing too, I'm on top of the hill, I got. Howl's going every direction, I get, I get, oh, whole field, I can, I can watch Savannah, I can watch Bell, I can see any of them going on, Grand Mountain, if we get up to one point with binoculars, you can see it, but it's just. You get the concussion up the hollow and it gets everybody stirred up and it's just. You know, the year before, they, I had 42 big cattle, about 1,400 pounds, run in, run out, and, I mean, I had to jump in the feed bunk to get out of the way, and thank God, nobody went through right away, I got a bale of hay out and do a trough and just tried to calm them down, so. I just, I would love to see it rain every fourth of July, I mean, I'm, no, I find it, I enjoy fireworks too, but it's just. Things are getting bigger, 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 and more, 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 and more, it's just starting to create some havoc, and also my neighbor kids, I talked to them, just moved down, they had a couple of horses. And, and they weren't home, I asked if they're home like the night some of this stuff was going on, no, and by golly, the next time they got them out, they tapped, they took off and went shot right down the road, they ran literally down the road, they were, they were scared, is what they were, just from what had been happening, so. Bad enough to bobcats and who knows with all of the tempers, but, I don't know, I just want to, you know, would like to somehow make people more aware of what's their surroundings, I guess.
We had talked about having permits, the places where they sell the fireworks, you know, to fill this out, to get more warning out to people.
Right.
I mean, part of our thing with the permit is just a, it shows on where their house is at and where they're firing them off of that, it's kind of a safety issue for us, you know, fire department, if something gets hurt, they know where to go because.
Right.
It's down in the field somewhere.
Right.
You know, that.
Yeah, I know years ago, when it was the one, you shot them all the bottles, aroma, you know, but now it's, you know, it's.
It's an issue, that's for sure.
Yes, so.
Well, I guess maybe it's, maybe it needs to go further than that, maybe we need to go to the state and say, hey, there's more and more of this, and there's more confinements around, and there's, we gotta be, use some common sense here.
Right, and that's, that's why I'm here, hopefully I can get something like that started.
I mean, we gotta be aware of our surroundings.
Yes, yes, agriculture is probably still, the benefits in Iowa that leads on to every other business, it's as simple as that.
Two, three, four, 500 head in the building, that, that's, that's a little revenue right there.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
So you mentioned about putting out aid for them stuff, are there any other things that you could do prior?
I, I try to lock them in the yard, you know, I, I get them out of the pasture after the incident, I enter the pasture into the fence, there's a 38 pad, 30 acre pasture, runs right alongside 550, and I put all new fences on that too, I just in fear of something ever happening, you know. And every time it gets close to any weekend on the 4th of July, or I'm, I lock them in every, you know, every night, you know, daytime and just the best that I can, but it's still, they get, the other night, they turned it off. Went into the one fence, rammed the gate up into there, knocked the fat board off the fence, and, you know, it's, and it's, it's happened two years in a row now, that, that part of it, and, you know, I'm, I'm just scared to leave, leave the farm, even go anywhere else, you know, at that point, because. You know, it wouldn't be good to my standing cornfield bar right now either, you know.
Yeah, well, and it's certainly an issue sometimes, or. Once you've had a conversation with someone, sometimes it escalates a little more and a little more, and, you know, we certainly don't want that, we want everybody to be aware of it. Again, just some common sense in their surroundings.
I bet if I go to a BQ, BQA meeting and ask any farmer if they would want anybody shooting fireworks off within a half mile there. No, they won't.
No, they won't. And maybe there needs to be a radius or a distance.
Right.
That we can come up with, and maybe it needs to come from the state.
Yes, true, yeah, no, that's very true, that's, that's why I thought, I'm in Section 16, I'd love to see at least one section around my whole parameter, just. Kind of hopefully they wouldn't shoot it off, I'd better see, I'd rather see two, but, you know, I, I don't know if there's a way to press this on to the state to where they could, you know, I mean.
Well, it'd be your, your state legislator would be the one that would have to. Implement or, or introduce it into the legislative process.
Right.
Certainly, certainly, we're certainly aware of it anyway, Jim, we appreciate it, and I know I had talked to him and I said, I would like to have him come in and speak to the whole board.
Right, so I don't know if you guys would pass it on to the next level of legislation, or if I have to.
County attorney and the next level, yeah.
Okay, no, I'd really appreciate it and stuff and appreciate your time, so, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
You too.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to be joined by. Appreciate our Dan Port, Jackson County Attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so the first thing I have is temporary construction easement and. Maintenance agreement, this will be with A.G. Spiegel, both Spiegel Family Realty, to, well. On the east side of the jail property, so that if we don't have to have a eight foot tall. Are there any questions about temporary construction easement?
I know we changed a few things, have we sent it to them, have they pre-approved this, or?
I have not, I just got it done on Friday.
Yeah.
So no, I did not, I didn't know if we wanted to do that, we certainly can. Um.
Well, I guess.
In the email that I got, she just said, sent it to us for signature, so.
Yeah, I guess if, if they get it and they'll sign it, then I guess we'll hear. No, I mean, I, I like the slope of it, you know, if you go out there now and you look toward the north end, that's sloped probably about the same way, but.
Certainly, one way we could do it is if you want to just approve it, and then I can send it off, and then when they bring it back for signature, then we can sign it after that, in case they do have.
I think that's the way to do it.
Sure.
Yeah, I would say so too, let them.
And it's showing the parking lot, so the parking lot will stay where it's at.
His parking lot, yeah, but there's no parking lot on the south side of that building, they drove up in there. Parking lots by the dock there, but, you know.
Yeah, it's close to where makes the transition.
Utility building, yeah.
Yeah.
But it reads in here that we're still X amount of feet away from.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you agree to this, I think it's a benefit, no doubt. And when I talked to him, he didn't have an issue with it, so.
And we would maintain that area.
So that was my understanding in the emails I got from John, was that we, for him allowing us to do this, we would maintain this, this. Slope will.
The slope area we will maintain.
Yep, we will mow it and we'll do whatever needs to be done to it, I don't know. The maintenance agreement is very simple, because I didn't know what else was required to maintain it other than seeding and mowing, so that's what I have.
No, and I think being there is no compensation, that's probably. I guess we're mowing right next to it anyway, you can make three more slots, once. I think it's reasonable.
I just wish they hadn't removed the dirt.
Where did more dirt come out of there now?
I know, I saw that. I just can't believe that that happened, because John said it wasn't supposed to, but it sure did. And then, you know. How you, how you can compact it in there so that it's going to be secure, I don't know how they can do that. Certainly would have been a lot more secure if they hadn't done it.
So what do we do with the dirt that's coming out of that? Want to stockpile that somewhere?
I'd say we'd have to use it for slope, the lower part of it.
Yeah.
I mean, if you take off the top here, it's gonna, you're gonna need more down below to fill it in, it's cut straight off now.
Yeah, but he hauled a lot of that dirt away.
I, I was under the assumption that was in the contract, that John said that they were supposed to remove it, so I know, that's what the contract said.
But they removed it, now we don't have the dirt to rebuild.
It's only nine foot. To get to the parking lot on the lower side.
So do you, do you want to make a motion to approve this, to set it on?
Yeah, that's what we want. Motion is second to. Approve the document so it can be sent to. Owner of the Spiegels, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
All right, I'll get that email to them today.
Okay.
The next thing I had was the ATV ordinance.
Two question.
So you just approved the temporary easement, correct? And maintenance agreement?
We just approved sending the documents on.
So both documents?
Both documents.
Okay.
Temporary construction easement and the maintenance agreement.
All right, so the next thing that I have is the ATV ordinance, and I got that out to you late yesterday, so I don't know if you got a chance to review it. I basically shortened it all the way down to the only thing we really have to discuss it over, which is. Allowing or not allowing ATVs on our paved secondary roads, so. I also added some warehouses in there, so that in 20 years, when we're looking back, we know why we did this, because sometimes I think, you know, you look back on things and you're not really sure why we did it. So I did add that in there, and then. Even though it's probably not necessary, I did put in there that only persons with access rights on Level C roads are allowed to use them, just because I could see somebody coming in and say, well, it doesn't, hey, we can't go on them, even though. By the ordinance resolution for the C, it says they can't. And then, as far as enforcement, I don't think anyone was using the ordinance before, they were just using state code, so. I, I just put in there that violations will be written under the applicable state code, and that way that covers. Any of the range of violations that could occur. Between, you know, equipment violations, state violations, any of that.
And this, anybody driving one has to be 18 or.
Yes, and I did put that in there, because that is such a change from what we had before, so I didn't spell that out, otherwise I just referred to the other code sections they need to comply.
Previously, they had to be 16, but they also had to have passed a safety course.
Right, but now it doesn't matter, you have to be.
Right.
So I did.
So I'm still a little cloudy. On this whole issue, and I've asked several different people, and we've had discussions about this, is, is our secondary paved, secondary paved road. So it says we can use them to access. The next, I would say gravel.
Improved.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, by you authorizing them to be ridden on secondary roads, like you're ridden on secondary roads, paved ones, just like they are the unmoved. So the only.
That's the way we added originally.
Right, so the only issue now is they can write on the primary two lane undivided, to get from one place to another, now, the way that the. The way that the law reads, it, I think it does leave some interpretation. So it says the most direct accessible route between the following, and also the all terrain vehicle park or trail, which we really don't have here, I don't think.
Basically, it's all of our roads.
A secondary road on which such vehicles are authorized, a city street on which such vehicles are authorized, the vehicle operator's residence, so even though it says a direct and accessible route, it doesn't say to the nearest secondary road, so I think what. What's unclear is. If I'm, if I'm. Going from my residence, let's say my residence is three gravel roads and then a paved one, and I want to go to the paved one, can I go from my residence to the paved one, or do I need to go to the next?
You need to go to the next one, turn in there, turn around and then go to the next one.
And then go to the next one, and then go to the next one, and then you get to the paint.
You know, it's just the interpretation of it, I think, you know, and I've talked to several long port of people, and. They don't really have an issue with any of, we haven't had any issues really, you know, most of our accidents and what we had have been on private property, but. I guess they're not really, from what I've talked to, they're not real concerned about it, other than if they're breaking the law, they got it coming, you know, so that's, that's obvious, that's no different to drive a car.
Yep, and I think the big thing at first is going to be making sure that they're all have the proper equipment, because it sounds like horns maybe is not.
Horn's not normally a standard on them, no. So I guess what's the interpretation here?
I also don't know that. I also don't know that that's a reason to pull them over to check, because you have a horn, so it would be more of a violating something else.
Too, I guess. I'm sorry.
Mirrors as well, I think it's not something.
Well, and I think the law says you have to have. A rear view mirror, now I don't know if that means a center mirror or two side.
Well, it says rear view, but if you continue to read, it says that if, if a rear view mirror would be obstructed, then you can have side mirrors, so I would assume that like on an ATV.
Either or, yeah.
I mean, where you can stick a rear view, it needs to be a side mirror.
I, I bought a kit for mine, a turn signal with a horn on it.
Yeah, there's a kit there out there. There are, and they're, I, I think they should have them out there. They're certainly bright, I mean, they have the lights on all the.
Anything to. Eliminate any possibility of accidents.
Yeah.
Slow moving sign, that's the side part.
I don't think that, I, I read it three times and I do not see where it says that that's required.
Now, I think the ordinance, ordinance in the cities for golf carts are slow moving vehicles, I just because of their speed, you know. At 35, there really wouldn't be any difference then.
I don't know how fast tractors go there.
Well, the new ones go 35.
But, you know, even the flag, I know the new county, whenever we went out, we went to new county, made sure we had a flag with us, you know.
Now, I guess, I, I've got something to discuss, it doesn't, the code doesn't specifically preclude requiring that, I don't know if that's something you want to require, we hadn't in the past, to my knowledge, I don't think.
I don't think it's necessary, but that's just me, you know. Um, what, you need approval to, to set the public hearing date, or to?
So if there's any questions or any changes you want to see in the, what I've drafted, otherwise, if we just need to set a public hearing date, so that we can get. The process moving.
I think that's the point we're at.
And I see that Luanne's not here, because she's like, she's the one that gets.
The 10, the 20, the 15?
Um, I think it's four and 10, isn't it?
Most of them are four and 10.
Not more than.
Not more, less than four and not more than 10.
Right. I mean, obviously the soonest to get in the papers would be next week. And I'm not sure.
That would be the 27th?
No, the 20. 20, yeah.
Well, I, I think we want to move, keep moving forward, so if that's the someone we can do it, yeah. So then the public hearing would be 26? I would make that motion.
Okay, at what time, 9:30?
9:00, should we go right away?
It's, it's up to you, Todd's coming, gonna be here next week, yes.
It doesn't matter anymore, whatever time you take that. 9:30 sounds good.
Yep.
Go for it. Second.
Okay, public hearing would be, uh, July 26th at 9:30.
All right, I'll get.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion here.
And we'll get that one rolling, any questions?
You have this time?
All right.
Fireworks. Oh, well, yeah, you kind of missed out here on the fireworks. We talked about that.
What's that?
Mr. Kaplan was here.
Oh, I didn't see he was here to talk about firework issues.
Yeah, and we were talking about having some type of distance or range away from a livestock facility or operation per se.
Ah, for shooting them off.
Yeah. I mean, we were always been concerned with that, when we see the maps and the last one that come in, I knew there was a livestock facility close, and I called the applicant and I also called the neighbor, and they were good with it, so.
Okay.
But it makes sense, I mean, maybe even that, like we talked at the state level, maybe that's where we need to go.
Well, that would be nice, wouldn't it?
I mean, I don't know what else we can do, can we pass an ordinance to say you have to be. What's a quarter mile?
Quarter, a quarter mile isn't gonna make a damn bit of difference, as loud as they are, you know, my windows were shaking like crazy.
Oh, yeah, it's crazy.
I think, I haven't looked into this, because we kind of, we're just like, we're gonna fall the stage along, but I believe we are allowed to regulate. When and where. As long as we're not violating the state law, they can be shot off, we can't, we're very limited in where we, what we regulate as far as where they're sold, but as far as when they get shot off.
I also.
And of course, we're dealing with two different issues here, one is the display fireworks that they have to get a permit for that can be shot off any time of the year. And the other is your consumer fireworks that can be shot off between, is it June tenth and, or June first, maybe, and then July.
I don't remember how.
So for consumer fireworks, typically, we're outside that period until December. So we have some time to figure out exactly what we would want to do and how we would want to do it.
It's just almost impossible to enforce something to that and say, you know, is this a displayed fireworks, do you have a license for that? You gotta have a license for these fireworks, and it's, again, it's been a concern of some of our EMS and fire departments, you know.
Yeah.
Sure, and I don't, I know that Luanne sends the permits for the display ones over to. The sheriff's office, I don't know if she sends them, I was thinking she sent them to whoever the local fire department.
She does.
Okay.
She lets them know that there's where it's at and, and who's providing.
Um, and I don't, I guess I don't know if we're having a problem with the display fireworks, people I think are doing a pretty good job of getting permits when they need to. And that's the easiest to regulate on the front end and say, okay, well, where you're wanting to do it is. Too close to animal confinement or whatever, if you wanted to do that. It's those consumer fireworks from one July, June, July, and then December that are the harder ones, obviously, too.
I think the thing that we need to do a better job of is letting them know, because, I mean, we have people come in the morning that they wanted it approved.
Oh, yeah.
And so they just need to know what the timeframes are.
And we have a policy on it, did we do it as a resolution, you know, I know it's on ordinance. Or is it just a? Okay, I'll have to pull my fireworks.
Your guess is as good as mine.
Luanne, no. We can definitely work on that and make that a part of the, I mean, if nothing else, we could actually put it on the permit person that they need to notify. Show proof that they have notified their neighbors within so many.
And we talked too about maybe having these permits at where they're selling fireworks, so that if somebody buys some, they could pick up. The application there and then submit it to the county. And we can have on there when it would be due by.
So, so city have any fireworks permits or not?
I, when you tell you.
Well, if you have a certain time, you know, they, there's a couple of days and they have, they can certain time, a certain time.
For consumer, yes.
Right.
And McCoker does as well, but it's like a week, I think, I think it's July first.
So maybe even a little more investigation when we have some time is to check other counties and see what kind of ordinance that are out there, see if they have any issues. I mean, like this guy said, you know, it's his livelihood, he's got two, three hundred head of cattle in there, they get out, that certainly damages them, if you can even get them back.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. This time we'll be joined by Becky Chapin, our human resource director, and incidentally, congratulations on your daughter. They had an article in the Tribune paper about her.
Oh, was there?
Yeah.
I always have to check her first.
Um, no, it was maybe a couple of days ago.
Oh, I missed.
Had her name and talked about her at the, was it at Fort Dodge or where?
First state chap, yeah.
Yeah, and said that she was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I still have it, I'll try to save it and cut it out for you.
Yeah, do that, I can start against it too, I'll have to.
Maybe a law enforcement wants to use her.
Maybe? I'll keep, I'll keep her for a while.
Keep her safe for a while, yeah.
Um, so just a couple of things today, so you're all aware of the resignation of our assistant county attorney, Angela Sance. Her last day with us will be August fifth, and advertising has begun for that, you probably hear it on the radio. It's at the local papers and the Telegraph Herald, it's online and all that good stuff, so. Um, Sarah will look forward to replacing her, and then I also been provided a resignation from our county EMS coordinator, Ryan Conley. His last day will be next Friday, July twenty-second. I have asked him to come in next week to do a roundout of his department and turn in all of his equipment and that kind of stuff, and then do an exit interview as well. Um, I would want to coordinate your calendars to find a time that would work to do that, so we can get that scheduled. Um, I talked to Luanne a little bit yesterday about Tuesday, and I think the Tuesday morning schedule was a little bit tight, so we might need to look to an alternate day, you know, someday between.
Yeah, and I talked to him and he said he was willing to come in and, and meet with us.
So if we can just figure out what day and time that will work for everybody, then we'll go ahead and get that.
Well, we certainly need to find a direction, which way we want to go, or what, what, what it entails, you know, and I think that includes the EMS board, you know. Um, whether it be somebody from every department, or whether it be just their board to have input to say, you know, this is what we need out here.
We definitely need to take some time and review the whole position itself.
But in essence, he is our employee.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Jack, we just don't know what they need for, you know, we can say we can hire a medical. Coordinator, trainer, but I guess, what, what does, whether these. Whether these EMS services, what are they needing, what do they want more?
Yeah, I had long talk with Brian too, and it's this, so could you help us with the job description? And he said it has changed from when he started, as to what, what his duties are, so he's willing to do that.
I'm certainly, he would have some inputs, you know.
Yeah, and we have some other context, too, we talked to Sarah a little bit yesterday, and we can talk about that a little bit more when we have a chance to kind of assess the overall position, but. There is some confusion between the association and the council and all that kind of stuff, so we just kind of did a little bit of a flow chart, so everybody can understand and what the expectation of the position is, and. I think when we started this seven years ago, there was a foresight of what it would be, but like you said, I think it's evolved into other things and.
Seven years ago was probably the first one in the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was one of them, so we did have a couple of sample, there was a couple of counties out there, I'm sure it's changed a lot since then, so we just need to take some time and review all of that, so. But if we can get a time, you know, settled down next week at least to do the exit interview. And then. Can let me know that.
Are you looking for times or no, or?
Or I need you to let me know, you know, you can look at your calendars and if Luanne's back tomorrow, she can maybe coordinate. When the thirty, if you don't have meetings together and she can let me know, but.
That'd be fine.
With his last day being Friday, I can have him come in Friday too and do his equipment and all that kind of stuff, but if we can do it all in one day, then we'll do that, if not. We'll see what Luanne's schedule is like tomorrow. So with that, I would ask for a motion to accept the resignation of EMS coordinator, Ryan Conley, effective July twenty-second, twenty-two.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. To. Accept Ryan Conley's resignation, and I'm going to say with regret, I, I really. I'm unhappy about it, but I guess we can't make somebody work for us if they choose to move on, so all those in favor? I, I, motion carry.
And then the last thing I have is, it's just, it's become pretty evident that having a cellular telephone for the zoning department would be beneficial, with her being out doing site assessments and nuisance. Um, enforcement and investigation and having the ability to contact, have contact with property owners and let the county while she's out in the field would be beneficial. Prior administration didn't really have much contact when they were out doing site assessments. Laura would like the ability to do that, she's uncomfortable, she and I have talked about having her private cell phone number out there, which is understandable. Um, when the health department is out in the field, she's kind of communicating with me throughout the day for safety reasons, and there's kind of an asset to have that available there. Um, so if there's any opposition to that, I would go ahead and arrange for her to have the phone and the. Start the cell service, it would cost about five hundred dollars for the year to have the cell service. It's not in her specific budget right now, but there's going to be variables there because she inherited the budget that the prior director.
I would say absolutely, you have that.
It's certainly a safety issue, I think that needs to be identified and, you know.
Is, is there still cell phones lying around over here?
I'll ask them, I've got some from.
Well, one time we had an extra one or two, I don't remember.
I think maintenance has used a couple of those.
Yeah, I think.
We purchased them outright, we don't contract or anything, and they're like a hundred ninety-nine dollars that we get for maybe a Galaxy or whatever, so. I'll go ahead and arrange for that.
Okay, do you need a motion for that or no?
I don't.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay.
So we'll talk more about the EMS and we'll go from that to your schedules and then.
And obviously, we found out that our, our candidate that we interviewed for the county engineer. Accepted a position in another county, so we are going to have to start again trying to. Advertise and get some applications for a county engineer, so I, I assume you're just gonna go ahead and start that process?
Well, we have two options, we can either. Introduce discussions with Clinton County about a longer term shared agreement, or we can go ahead and put money into the advertising. Right now it's out on the free site, so it's on the National Association of County, the Iowa Service Bureau. On, on our line and stuff like that, but as far as paid advertising, I'm not doing any of that anymore. You know, if you, if you want to put the effort and, and the expense into doing, giving that one more go, we can certainly do that.
Did that generate any? Yes, last time. Or where, do you know where they came from or where they found it?
The last one that we interviewed was from the Service Bureau. The Iowa Service Bureau. And the other, there was a couple that came off the handshake that we didn't interview from the college that weren't qualified for the position. I think the local, I think the two assistants were local newspapers.
Okay.
So I don't know how much outreach or how much money you want to put into that, or if you want to have a discussion with Clinton County first to see what the longer term viability is, we do have a three month contract with them, so. August here.
Well, I think it's certainly discussing that we need to have, and, you know. Privately with, with the individual, and we have another interview coming up that potentially. My first assistant, yeah, so.
And it comes all in, it's come to the.
I think that we need to. Discuss it.
So let's do the interview like we planned on Thursday, and then we can talk with Todd after that and.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, sorry. Wednesday, good job, Mike, just checking you there.
Checking me, that was tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning, and then we can, you know, we can determine, you know, we can talk with Todd, and then we can decide if we should schedule a meeting with the Clinton County Board or what direction you want to go.
That'll be fine.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Lisa.
I just have two items for the board this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July fifth, twenty-twenty-two board proceedings, that's written by Officer Smith, unauthorized publication in the official newspapers.
I have a motion in a second to approve the publication of the minutes, the previous meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Um, there was a previous. Resolution that was done to. Put delinquent sewer assessments from Leisure Lake onto the tax records, and there was a, an individual. That had paid four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for their assessment, so it should not have been included in the resolution. So today I need a motion to approve resolution number nine sixteen dash zero seven dash twelve dash twenty-twenty-two. To remove the lien of four hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the property of Dan Bailey, effective July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two.
Move second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
And with Luanne gone today, would you like me to review the calendar, or are you okay with?
Reading it ourselves?
Correct.
I think we're capable of that.
I'm giving you the option.
And I think we're fine with that.
Okay. Then that's all that I have for the board today.
Okay. And, um, is, is this the week that? Marty's gone?
Yes. Yes. Okay. I think the next thing that you have is for Todd Seifert and Brian, meaning to come into this.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Do we have any committee reports or commission reports from anybody? You didn't have much last week, because it was kind of quiet.
I had some judicial.
I had nine-one-one and we're moving forward with some training for, to operate your radios correctly. So that's, it's a big issue, well, we, there was some issues with. What they were going to charge us, Motorola would come in and train us, and we think we can do this with the help of Mike Day and, and some of our local EMA. We're moving forward with that, and we went ahead with the, tried to get the. Variants for the extended height of our pole, that's what you want to call it, antenna. It's got to be eighty feet now. And there was a cost of forty thousand on that, to move that higher and to move the one on the cave rail higher, and Motorola's covering that.
Oh, oh, thank God.
Yeah, no, they're covering it, they, it was their baby to make it. Right, and there was an obstruction, a couple of trees and. Asked where the trees were. No, I mean. And then, of course, we had a question of how long would this be good for this thing, just. They guarantee over twenty-five or so. Moving forward with that, we know it's been a little costly and a little slow progressing as far as. Um, getting everybody on board and, and of course, the training to the issue is like anything. You don't know how to operate it, what, what good is it to you, so.
I guess one thing we did discuss it, so judicial. Was, um. People being incarcerated and losing their social security and all the other things, Medicare and different things like that, and trying to make that transition. More workable. I mean, it's.
Well, I know we've been discussing and working on that with, with the mental health region, trying to get. Because once they get in jail and then they can't get their meds. And they have to wait so long after they're out of being incarcerated, it's just.
It's covered under Medicare, and then we end up paying for it, and it's just. It needs to have.
Yeah, that's been an issue for me for the last couple of years, I went to, you know, when they want your, your ideas for legislation the next year, you know, what's it? With the expenses that we spend on medical care and medication for when they're in our facility, yeah, dental, it's like, they got a toothache, so they go out and get it. Carceral, I don't know, it seems like. As soon as we get them there, they gotta go to dental, so.
You've got quite a few expenses later.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely expensive and a budget.
And I think we had three hundred and fifty thousand that the federal hold us down there for medication and stuff. But they were behind, and they finally caught up when they ran, I mean, sometimes they're up around a million dollars in the rear, so it's like. They need to hire an accountant somewhere.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it just puts a burden on everything. But they're getting caught up now, other than some, I think the medical sound down there. But it just needs to be, one of the ladies that sits on the board on current, Kathy Laird had worked in that field and understood it. And they need to be, when they first come in, they get. This processing, and they're supposed to cancel this, and if they don't cancel it, then it gets, I mean, it goes into the late fees, and then all of a sudden they owe money for their Medicaid. Which they're, they're not, they're not getting any money because they're locked up and they took away their social security, so. That creates another thing, like when they have hundreds of dollars they need to pay before they can get reinstated, it's just a mess. They are working on it down there and helping people say, okay, now that you're here, and even in work release, as long as you're laying your head on a pillow. You're incarcerated, so that's, probation's different than work release, but, so there's terminology there that. It's hard to. Trying, and I brought up the same thing, that might be same because of legislation, I says, how do we get there, I mean, I don't, I don't even know how you would write something like that. Between everybody down there, the board and the director, and then everybody said, oh, you got some pretty good ideas, so. Hopefully we can get a little traction there, and try to make it, and like they've said, they've been working on it for, well, we own some there for forty years, it's like. It's a problem back then, it still is. But we need, you know, move forward in this for time.
The farm lease. Have, has the current tenant, we have notified him.
Correct.
Yeah.
They approved Sarah.
Yeah, send the letter. And that's been done, okay.
I did stop down at the Welcome Center. And found one flag in the driveway. Boy, I don't know where them other ones are at, suppose they're flagged, but. I started walking through the woods, not about to get lost, but not really, but, I mean, it's just dense down there, so.
For some reason, all of the lights were on. So Marty called me, he goes, why are all the lights on, I went, they shouldn't be.
And I showed some awesome bathroom light with song and event fans running down. I left one, one light on, I think, in the schoolhouse part.
Okay.
When Marty went down, could he get any of these?
That was his intention, I haven't seen anything, but he did contact me, it was last Thursday, that he was down there, so. I, I didn't hear that he did not get them, I assumed that he did, I have not seen them.
I've got pictures of them, they're still there.
They're still there?
The art stuff.
He went down last Thursday, that's what he was supposed to get, he didn't, so were you down after last Thursday?
Let me look, tell me when I took the pictures. Ninety six July sixth.
Okay. I, yes, because he, that's what he called me was because, oh, he said all of the lights were on, but if you were out there on the sixth, how did they get all the lights on on the seventh?
Well, he said. The one main room I left, that was on. But their other ones were on too that I shut off. Well, I don't know.
So are we staked or the, we can, we know what we're selling, we can move forward?
I haven't got the legal description yet or.
Do we need to contact Alex to make sure that we have the legal description?
Well, the surveyor come up with legal description.
So are you having him survey it or are you just having him set the corner pins?
At that time, we would found, uh, Alex found three of the pins, but he couldn't find the fourth one. Thanks, Mary, that's a pretty rare word.
So we should, we're not really changing anything, so we should have a legal description, we should.
I was gonna say, so then you have it already?
Yeah, you do.
All we were gonna do is find the pins, so we knew what was ours or what we're selling.
Okay, and then, yes, you have that already, I mean, and that would be good enough for a sale or for transfer.
Well, according to our agenda for next week, Tom is coming in.
Oh.
Tom Devine. At ten o'clock next week for a work session, so um, I guess we need to decide. What we're going to remove from inside there or what they're going to remove from inside. Um, so that we can, I mean, obviously if we're gonna. Try to sell it, it's gotta be presentable and they gotta be able to walk through it.
Was it clean, Larry?
Yeah, it looked pretty good.
Okay.
Um. And the conference table is nice, it's a smaller, like, oak table. Maybe.
The conference table and the eight chairs are nice.
Yeah, they are.
And the stackable chairs are, have leather seats and they're nice. And.
You've been done it?
And I don't know where you go with all the school desks and that kind of stuff, I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
Yeah. Think that historical societies and whatever.
They do not, they have no room for any more school desks. So.
So my question is, is this, did this come from the courthouse? Is this an old courtroom? Okay.
What? And no idea.
It sure looks like one of those, you know what I'm talking about?
Looks like one.
Yeah, I, that's what it looks like. Um, I'm not sure that it is, but that's what it looks like.
Well, I guess we certainly have discussion with Tom and what, where they, why they want to proceed and where we're gonna do it, but I mean, if we have to clean it out, we have to clean it out. Yeah, either dispose of it or sell it or something.
So I hate to ask, how much room is left at the peace by players?
There's a nice stove too.
Oh, yeah.
That you'd have, Shelley could maybe tell you, I don't know, she knows.
Your daughter has an exact same stove out here, no.
Well, I guess I'm thinking, you know, that's a nice table, is that something that could go into the law enforcement center?
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
It's very usable, it's very nice.
I guess my other question is, how many people do we see downstairs in the conference room? Is there eight, maybe ten, do we sit around?
Yeah, at least.
I think there's eight chairs with this.
Well, that would be my other.
Oh, and there's some, there's some stacked up in the back with their cushion padded.
Those are, yep. There's, I think.
I know it's more than that, it's gotta be at least twenty there.
Oh, I think, I think I counted thirty some.
Okay, yeah.
Do you have an inventory of somewhat?
I do, yeah.
Here's what I can tell you, that the chairs that we did set in the hallway here at the courthouse, they get used a lot.
Uh huh, maybe, just if we can have somebody that got that list in inventory of this.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, well, we'll talk with Todd next week or Tom next week when he comes in and, and. Try to move forward.
So where would we put that stuff?
Well.
I'm not big on storing that stuff, if you want to keep it, I, there's gotta be a reading for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, it goes on the, go something.
Amen. Okay, at this time, we're going to be joined by Todd Seifert, President and CEO of Imagine the Possibilities, and Brian May.
Were we late this morning?
No, no, we were just. Luanne's not here, so we went, we were a lot quicker.
I was meeting with the chamber and I said, I better get going here, I'm gonna catch heck, so here we are, here we are, how's it going, guys?
Okay.
All right, just an update, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll just tell you, I talked to Jared before he came out and he basically said, everything's going great out there, communication's been good and we're getting things done, so I don't have any concerns.
Yeah, I mean, we updated some lady, we got the subject field done, I hope he's gonna be happy with that, that was kind of a project, you know, a little rougher than what we thought, there was some.
Yeah, he was happy, he said, Marty's been great to work with and I, is that where the mowing or you seeded it down there? You've been watering that, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like two inches the other end.
Actually, there's some erosion control. Um, waddles out there, they call them that for erosion control too, so they did put some of them in.
I didn't know, we aren't using the Kubota to mow lawn out there, we're taking our own out there, that was the only thing I learned. And he just said, because the other one's so wide, it'll leave a skim on one side and the other, it just works better if we take our zero turn out there and we get it, a more consistent mow, which is no big deal, I just didn't know that.
Yeah, I, I would say maybe up in your front yard you'd want that, the problem is, I probably want a wider deck, you get lumbered, but then your levelness is not quite as good. So maybe you can use a Kubota yet down on the, on the, over the hill by the barn or something.
Well, it sounds like it works really good in the winter time too, so, but they weren't complaining, he just said it, it looks better when they use that.
I appreciate them keeping it up too, you know, I mean, have a little pride in it. It looks good out there.
Other than that, things keep plugging along, we're looking at more wage increases kind of across the board, I don't know if we're ready to give them yet, but you, we've gotten a couple increases last couple of years from a waiver program. I think for the last two years, about seven percent, so we've. Things really are looking. Other than labor, other than finding employees, you know, financially, you know, the governor's been supportive, put some money in line item, uh, budget, so I think we're in good shape there, if we can just. Yeah, it's just all over the state finding good people and. It's the same problem everybody else has had.
Uh huh.
And otherwise, things are pretty stable. Yeah, I think we're starting to crawl back just a little bit, um, I know. Last month, we were actually hot, we had plus three minus zero, so we were actually going in the right way for this first month and probably six months that, that my area has been like that, so. Maybe starting to see a little bit, we'll see if it continues. We do try different things, not that it matters to you guys from recruitment standpoint, and nothing seems to move the needle a whole lot, I know we've been doing some retention bonuses, that seems to help. But honestly, to Brian's point, we're, right now, we seem to be getting more employees, but I, I kind of look at it and think we're almost at a tipping point from a. Affordability standpoint, to people, you know, with the gas price, I mean, you, you can't, you can't choose not to work anymore, you're not gonna leave the house, so I think you have some people coming back into the workforce that have been holding out, coupled with some of the things we're doing, and while we're not getting an overabundance of people coming in, it's, it's nice to get a few people in and have some choice on it. And we've had some really good people, which is, which is great, it makes life a lot easier.
Oh, amen.
Yeah. And then the house, I would just give you an update, we're going to uh. Probably build an accessible house here in town, I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself, I won't even talk about where we bought the lot or who we bought it from, we're in the process of doing that right now, but we're gonna be building a, probably a five bed accessible home here in town. And at some point, we'll probably look at selling the Clark Street House, the one up there behind the Y, just because it's not very accessible and our population up there is getting older and needing wheelchairs, so. We'll probably look at selling that and then somewhat replace that with more of an accessible home. But for anybody listening, I mean, we are looking for some lots in town and they have to be big enough, you know, the lots next to me on Western are only point two two acres. We can't put a two car garage on, it's not wide, so that's not gonna work, so we did find one, but we're looking for others and looking in other parts of the state. And the state's talking about actually for the first time, maybe having some grant money available to help in some of these bills, because as you know, Medicaid can't pay that, but they're trying to figure out a way to, to help, and that's. That seems to be the one big problem statewide, affordable, accessible housing. And I know, you know this, Jack, but when we own homes, that's something the state doesn't like, they don't like the agencies to own the homes, but the problem is. If somebody else owns it, you gotta charge the people living there seven thousand more in property tax, it becomes unaffordable, and I know nobody wants to hear that, but that's just kind of the reality of the situation, that we can make it affordable by not paying the property taxes, when you add those in. Our individuals just don't have the money to, to pay it, they just can't afford it, so that's, that's an issue and hopefully, uh, some more money comes available for accessible, and you guys know, our, our population is aging quite a bit, I mean, we've had a lot of the same folks for years and. They're just not getting around the way they used to, so we gotta deal with that as well. Yeah.
When, when does our contract come up?
So.
I think this.
This year. For the Andrew Jackson care.
Yeah. How many beds do you have up by the, why? Five, five, but there again, you have five sitting upstairs, five rooms that just sit there empty, because nobody can get back, you know, so it doesn't seem, I think for a right rental person, that'll be a good property, because you have that little. Kind of apartment right next to it too, so, um, yeah. Just a lot of wasted space. Elevator. We talked, and they had the chairlift in there going back in the day, but, but even if you could do ten, I, I mean, that gets into problems with funding, they don't want that many people living together, so I think it would work better if we could get to a four, five person house, and it's just. Any situation we have, the less people living there, the more coherent it seems to be, it's just less, yeah, you know, you know. Absolutely.
And, and the lease for the Andrew Jackson care does come up this September.
Is that when it comes, okay, okay.
So we'll have to be, we'll put some thought into that.
Yes. Yeah, I don't, we don't hear much about that service, frankly, I'm on a call every Wednesday with Medicaid, some, some folks from Medicaid and. I, I don't think they know what they're gonna do with that, that specific type of service.
You know, it just frustrates me, I'm, uh. I'm not on the mental health board anymore, but I am on the Department of Human Services Mental Health for the, the console.
Yep.
And so we deal with the MCOs. And we deal with all the things that are going on, and now with the merger of the Department of Human Services and the Department of Health, we're in the, um, in the midst of that as well. But I'm still. Always curious how the MCOs are treating the providers. So if there's ever any issues, I would not want you to hesitate to contact me.
And I want, I think we have a good relationship with them, frankly, I think it's because of our size that they kind of have to deal with this, but I feel like we can call people. Every once in a while, you have hiccup in funding and pain and things like that, that seems to be the most common, uh, thing you hear. Having said that, if you follow up, and Brian used to work for the managed cares, if you follow up and you have those relationships, I think we've been okay. I think the issue really comes back, not that we go down this road, but. What impact do they have on us at all? I mean, there, there, there's, we're not doing anything differently with the managed care to be in here than we ever have.
You know, I guess the thing that irritates me is when we have these meetings, they're always talking about, they don't have enough beds, they don't have enough beds, but yet we have a wing that's empty. That we could utilize if they would just open the door and let us do it, so why don't they?
They are doing more crisis homes and things like that, but I mean, the truth of the matter is, I mean, if we wanted to open a crisis home or do something like that to Andrew. We could do it on paper, but then, then here's the problem is. There's nobody there all week and on Friday, when crap is a fan, then we get all kinds of people that are coming there, now how do we staff it? And it's like anything, it becomes a staffing thing, that's why the hospitals, I mean, you can't, they don't have the staff sitting there either, and it's. There are a lot of crisis homes, but I talked to them, they say, yeah, we can't take anybody because we don't have the staff. So you can have it.
Didn't they do wave that years ago, like institutional type part of that, they, they didn't want like an institution anymore?
Well, yeah, we're, and you know, they're, they're, they're shutting down Glenwood as we speak, for lots of different reasons, and so, yeah, we, we've got not all of our, in fact, Andrew's probably the only one that we have that would technically fall under. And Prairie House, we fall under that institute, um, yeah, you're exactly right, but no, they want smaller living environments, three, four or five people at the most, if you can. Again, the smaller living environment, the more unaffordable it is for people, so. For three people, it's almost unaffordable, live in a decent house, if you can get five in there, then that's more affordable, but again, you, you know, it's, it's one half dozen the other, I'm not sure there's a, a best answer. Unfortunately.
But they have to look at the rationale of that, you know, and, and, and they just ignore it.
Well, the settings rules, so take the settings rules, so that lot that we're gonna buy, we can put two houses on it, and I'm not sure we will, because I think we're gonna get flack and they're gonna come and say that you shouldn't have these two houses right next together. Well, then I would argue that I'll, I'll take you around town and we'll show you the lots that are available, because there's about two in town, I mean, that's it. And then there are others that are less affordable or too small, so if you have no other options, I'm not sure what you're supposed to do, and that's where common sense is supposed to actually work, right? But, but again, you can't call the state and say, can we do this and will this be allowed? Well, we'll have to wait till the audit. Well, I can't really spend half a million dollars and then have, it's not right, you know, it's that kind of deal, so it's hard to really plan and go forward without having any kind of definitive answer on how they're gonna interpret things, um, but that's.
You know, I get so tired of hearing them say, there's no beds, there's no beds, but there are opportunities that they ignore.
There is, and they send a lot of people out of state, you know, they're spending seven, eight, nine hundred dollars a day for somebody out of state, and, and you do have agencies in the state like REM that will serve a lot of those individuals. But then you see, then REM gets a bad reputation because they're taking difficult people, and when you take difficult people, sometimes bad things happen. And I don't think it's any kind of reflection on the provider, it's the individuals that they're taking, but a lot of, a lot of agencies are scared to take those folks because of, they get that bad reputation, if something goes bad. We look incompetent when nobody looks at the fact that you're dealing with someone that I'm not sure anybody can deal with safely the way you'd want to, so it's a. Yeah.
So we're in your market for labs and stuff, have you looked at the really cheap houses that need to be torn down?
We, we have, see with Jared now, because that's what he said, we can renovate, we just looked at one and give you an example on Summit, and just the way it was set up and chopped up, for lack of a better way to, to say it. It would have cost so much to renovate that thing to get it where we want it, and even the basements, frankly, if we build, we'll do slabs because the basements are nothing but trouble, that's just more inaccessibility for us, so we'll just get rid of those, it's more economical and then you'll still have the space up.
Buy the house on the corner by me and Jared down, and they, it's up to very deep line.
If you can get me a driveway from, I'm just kidding. You wanna stay in the.
And it'd be close to, it'd be close to Fifth Ward Park, you could just wheel it right back in three way and.
I've worked with Jared, Jared has been in, we've looked at several. It is tough, we have looked at several opportunities, and knowing what your needs are, it is, it's been tough, yeah.
I do think with the guy that's looking to sell us a lot now, who we know well, but I think he's one of the people that understands, it's a good, a lot of people get scared by us coming in, but I, we're the best neighbors you could have.
Oh, we are, I mean, you're my neighbor now, and it's wonderful.
Or I mean, we're great to live next to, I mean, I would love to have our folks next to us, but some people aren't comfortable, that was where I think the guy we're dealing with now says, yeah, this would be perfect.
It's a great lot.
It really is, right? Yeah, I, I think so.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, we just thank you for your service.
No, thank you. You're, are you November and then you're done or what is the deal?
December thirty first.
December thirty first.
My last.
And then Doc is running on opposed or he's got somebody?
He's not opposed at this point, they still have them till August for the Democrats, if they want to have a special. Um, convention to appoint somebody to, to run.
Well, we'll talk more before then, but I, I would just say, and I think you know this, Jack, I tell people all the time that you're probably the most knowledgeable county supervisor in the state of Iowa on what we do. I have no idea what you're, like, just what I said, you know, you have a fundamental understanding, that, that, an intimate understanding, that most people, I mean, you, you know, you could be working in this field for ten years and not understand all the, the intricacies there are. But you understand it and you've served on committees and you have a voice down there, and that's helped us a lot, so I appreciate that a great deal. And just the fact that you guys actually recognize us as, as, as a value in the community, because that's not the case in all communities, they don't see what we do as a value, and to have you appreciate what we do and support it. Uh, it means a lot to, not only us, but the employees and individuals who serve.
Well, I'll tell you, that's going to be a hard thing for me to give up. Um, I've really.
We can find a spot for you on the borders.
I may, I, I may talk to you about that.
All right, all right.
Because, you know, I, for thirty, thirty one and a half years, it's been my key position, trying to help people.
And you have and. It's known and appreciated.
I, I'm gonna miss that.
We will too.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
Okay, our next is at ten. Okay, our next is at ten thirty. It's a work session with Southern Judicial District on um office space. And so um I don't know that we'll be taking any action after that. It's just a discussion and and um. See, see what kind of a compromise we can come up with, so if there's no other business, we could adjourn and then just have our work session when we're done with that.
Make motion to adjourn. I would second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor.
All right.
And Greta, it was a pleasure having you here.
Nice to meet you, Greta.